Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Norfolk School Committee, Tuesday, March 19th at 7:05 PM. As we do with every school committee meeting, we start off reading our mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Mark Flaherty.
Kelly Peterson.
Thomas Doyle.
Sean Dooley.
Ingrid Alardi.
Okay. What we're going to do is, tonight's a little different. We're going to start off, we're going to have basically our regular meeting first. There's not a lot on it, so we'll move quickly through it, and then we'll have the budget meeting. So we'll start off with public comment. This is non-budget-related public comment. Just to remind everyone, we are being taped for broadcast, and it is everything you say is being recorded. So if you have budget issues, hold them after the budget presentation, and that'll be kind of different from our normal, you know, where you just make public comment. It will be more of a give-and-take and open discussion and open forum on the budget, so after that. So does anyone have any public comment on non-budget issues? Okay? All right, saying no, we'll move on. For donations, we have received from the Norfolk Lions Club charities account, $800, grant to MARC for the anti-bowling presentation, the Norfolk TPA, $2,600, teacher stipends for MCAS review classes, the Norfolk TPA, $2,159.20 donations for teacher grants and instructional materials, Norfolk TPA, $355.11 donation grant for art, five Photoshop licenses for Freeman Kennedy, and then one parent had made a $100 donation. So a total donations of $6,014.31. Do I have a motion to accept these monies?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have, my report's really, really quick. We have a couple fundraisers that weren't approved last time, these are different ones to approve. The sixth grade has a promotion fundraiser. It's for their graduation ceremony. It is a, it's a night at skating at the Norfolk Arena. We'll do these both together. Also, the class of 2013, 16th, sixth graders will be sending home a letter to parents, and they'll also be asking members of the community and businesses of the community to donate to their graduation ceremony as well. This is typically done every year, both of these things. Is there a motion to accept Exhibit 2 and Exhibit 3 for fundraising?
Second.
Any discussion on either? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the only other thing is I have is John LaFond, and I think he emailed everybody, has finished his evaluation, and, no, okay. Then he didn't even go.
He emailed the people that did the security watch.
Oh, okay. So John LaFond completed his security audit, and so he has a lot of recommendations. So he's, I asked him to come to the next meeting. We will meet with him in executive session to discuss security issues for the school. So depending on what date we set for our next meeting, he's going to try to come. If not, we'll do it in the May, May meeting. Okay. Dr. Alardi?
Great. I just have a couple of quick things to update the committee on. First of all, in your packet, you receive a copy of the proposed evaluation template for my evaluation this year that the evaluation subcommittee put together. So I just wanted to let you know that that's there. We discussed a formal timeline of January to January for the evaluation with a mid-cycle formative evaluation in June, so that you'll evaluate my progress towards goals in June, and then a final evaluation in January. The template that you have is what was recommended by the Department of Ed and the state for superintendent evaluation. We highlighted particular areas of interest for this year and focus, which are the standards that you would rate on, and then there's comment boxes for you to add any additional comments. This would be completed at the end of the cycle, so this is a final sum of eval. So I didn't know if anybody had any questions on that, or how you wanted to proceed with this, whether you want to just take a vote to accept it, or...
Just one question on page three.
Mm-hmm.
When you have the goals numbered, 1, 2, 3, and 1 for student learning and 1 and 2 for other goals.
Yep.
Are those set numbers, or is it designed to be open?
That's just an open template. So the goals that you approved at the September meeting, I would plug in there.
Okay.
Professional practice goals, student learning goals, and then eventually, as we add district goals, those would go under other.
Gotcha. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope? Okay. I was just trying to make eye contact. All in favor?
Aye.
The other thing I wanted to update, you had a discussion, and you passed a third reading of our policy on student costs, and I had given you an update on the status of past due fees. So it was bus, band, and kindergarten tuition. So you have an update in your packet of where we stood after the letters went out and the policy was revised. We've made significant progress in that. We originally had a balance from last year due of $59,000. When you received this update, we were down to 36,000. Currently, we're down to $31,000 in past due fees. The bulk of that is in tuitions. We have recouped the majority of the band and bus fees, so those are pretty well closed out at this point. So we're still working on the tuitions. We are just sending out second notices on those. The second letters were sent on the 15th for those, so I can update you again in the April meeting, but it appears that, you know, the implementation of the new policy has been effective.
And the past due fees, it's the kindergarten, the last year's kindergarten is still the big...
Yeah.
I mean, are we getting any comments, or, I mean...
Cut it in half.
We have about, we've recouped half of that from the last, we still have $5,000 in past due fees from last year's kindergarten.
Okay. I mean, have we been in contact with, I mean, are they saying, I mean, are any of them, are they just saying, "No, I'm not paying it"?
Some we haven't had a response from, some have talked about coming in to set up a payment plan.
Okay.
So, you know, we're working with individual families on that.
I had a question on that.
Yes.
I'm sorry, have you done with that part yet?
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't, I was looking at these numbers, I don't know if there was something we can, we can discuss this at another time, but just as something to think about, but I know a lot of, say, like a lawn care service or something, they'll offer you a discount if you pay upfront for the entire year.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something we may want to look into, and I know it's sort of budget-related, where if someone paid upfront for the entire year, they get some kind of discount. Separately, I was thinking if someone did the online payment, which is our preferred
Yep.
form of payment, they could also get some kind of discount. If they were on time all 10 times over the period, so you, basically, we've, you've kind of gone with the stick approach, maybe a little more of a carrot approach. We might be able to get to the situation where not in this catch-up mode and having to spend so many hours chasing after this money.
Yep.
Whereas if we give an incentive to pay this upfront, it might yield some better results for us.
I think that would be great. We actually talked about that at the administrative level, in terms of bus fees and that, maybe an incentive for prepaying before June. We could look at that. And when you set the fees at one of the next meetings, once you have a better sense of the budget, I think that's a good discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we couldn't really...
The other thing we talked about, too, that I think would be helpful, is that changing the timeline of when fees are due. So I think for band, people register for band, and then we don't, you know, bill until December, so there's a big gap in time. We talked about it, might be easier for parents if the payment was due when you signed up for band in September, rather than, you know, getting a bill halfway through the year when it's not necessarily in the forefront of your mind.
Plus, you also just come off the holidays and everything.
Right.
And now you're, hey, and here's a band bill.
Right, right.
I think there's a smarter time to do this.
And you're not looking for it because you registered earlier.
Yeah.
So I think looking at, you know, the practices for billing, the timelines of when we're collecting payment, and then maybe some early purchasing incentives would be a good idea.
How do we register people for band?
We send, they send a letter home, and the letter does outline what the fees are and the due dates, and parents fill it out and sign it and send it in, but we don't bill at that time. We bill later in the year.
Oh, I mean, does it make sense to pursue registration and payment?
That might be a good idea, an online registration for the band.
Yeah, it seems to make more sense. I mean, that you sign up, you throw your card in.
Yep.
And if you don't pay, then you're not signed up, and then it's, then we don't have to chase them.
It would be much easier than what we're doing now.
Then we're not kicking someone out.
Yep.
Essentially, because, I mean, you sign up, pick a sport, you pay right then.
Right then.
So it's so different.
I think it would be easier for family, and we're really looking to automate things. We did the preschool and kindergarten registration electronically, building use is electronic, so that's a good idea to look at that. That's all I had.
Okay, good. Moving right along, we're not going to do committee reports unless anybody's committee has something pressing that you want to discuss, just to keep it moving. Okay. So the only committee we're going to do are policy, subcommittee. We have two readings. We have an incidental change. We just noticed in our spreadsheet on the Exhibit 6, on community, school, facilities, and resources. We didn't, on the spreadsheet, it didn't show that if a private Norfolk group used the facility over the weekend, even if it was a Norfolk-affiliated group, it didn't show us charging them the custodial fee, and we have to charge the custodial fee. You know, no matter who it is, whether it's, you know, the Boy Scouts or the, you know, the selectmen, if they're using the school, we can't, as school committee, absorb their fee. And so that's the only incidental change on that, is just to change that, that anybody using the school on a weekend when you need to, or overnight when you need to hire custodial staff, has to pay the custodial staff. And so that was an oversight from before. So is there a motion to accept that incidental change?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we also have a final reading on the distribution of posting of promotional materials on school grounds. Exhibit 7. So I don't think anything was changed from the second reading last month.
This is everything the same, right?
Yeah. Any other, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. I have two applications for renewal of school partners. If you could look under your new business tab, Norfolk Grange, their main thing that they do with the school is the Clean and Green Campaign, townwide cleanup that they use, you know, a lot of the kids for the schools, and they try to coordinate that, and they're going to be doing that again on April 6, 2013, in honor of my birthday. I think that was the reason they picked that date. Is there a motion to accept?
As a partner?
Hmm? This is a renewal.
Okay.
Yeah. So they, because they utilize all this, the students, and so they do the things for the, for the students.
Yeah, that was my question first. I don't know if this is going to fit into the partner category.
Right.
Or another...
Right.
Do they need to be able to advertise and send material home with students, or is this just an event that we can approve? Do you know what I mean?
Right.
Because this is a one-time deal, right?
As I say, we approved them last year for a partnership, and I think the reason they want to be a partner is because they want to use, you know, have the signage up and things along those lines.
Okay.
Is there a motion to accept them as a partner?
I'm with you guys, I don't know.
All right, so moved, so we can have the discussion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to go...
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so now discussion. Go ahead, Thomas.
I just, I don't really have that much of opinion one way or the other. I just don't know for, seemingly a one-way, one-time event, a very nice one, I don't know if that necessarily qualifies for partner status, which...
Right.
I mean, I can understand they wouldn't do advertising for it, and it's a fantastic event, but there's no other time they do anything with the school, correct?
Right, right. As I say, and so they, you know, what they're saying, what they say is, in April of 2012, Norfolk Grange promoted its annual Clean and Green Campaign and townwide cleanup, including both the HL Day and the Freeman Schools. Norfolk Grange is planning its fourth annual Clean and Green on April 6, and again, it's to provide the event in the Norfolk Public Schools. So, any further discussion?
I just wonder, in terms of other groups that we have said no to, like the Boy Scouts, where, you know, we said it had to be a close and immediate relationship with the schools as opposed to an individual event, where they certainly can have access, and we can advertise things like this on, you know, the school website, the community news, things like that, and if it's a school-sponsored event, then it would be advertised, but as partners, then they would have the ability to advertise anything that the Grange is running through the schools.
Right.
So I guess that's the decision.
I got to agree, because we turned down other groups, you know, for similar reasons.
Okay. Motion to approve them as a school partner. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the second one is the Norfolk Community League applying for their renewal. They have organizational group, purposes aligned with the Norfolk Public Schools to provide education, lifelong learning. Their events they have, they put on their application are plans for the event for the following year, Easter Bunny Breakfast, Nearly New Sale, Community Day, Candidates Night, NCL Gala, Honda Trainer Hour, Santa Breakfast, Jingle Bell Run. Is there a motion to accept NCL as a partner?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I'll start off with a discussion from the standpoint of, granted, what they wrote on here doesn't necessarily fall under the concept of partnership, but they do work closely with the schools and provide grants and a lot of money to, a lot of their fundraising goes back to the schools.
Probably one of the most involved programs in the town.
Right, right. And they give a lot, and they do a lot of hand-on-hand work with the school and providing grants and things with teachers, even though it doesn't, it's not on their application, but I wanted to just kind of clarify that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay? Any other further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Motion to accept NCL?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, almost done. Well, look how fast. Approval of meeting, the meeting minutes for February 12th? Everyone have a chance to review?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Any changes?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next school committee meeting. This gets a little tricky just because of the April holiday. So we can do either the 9th or the 23rd, I guess would be the, and the 23rd is Candidates Night.
Well, the 9th, we have, usually we do our subcommittee meeting for policy. I mean, we might be able to do that before.
You could do it before.
We can change the time of that.
Yeah. What we can do the 16th, I mean...
16th is the, is school vacation.
That's right. I haven't had a school vacation in years, so I...
Well, now that you're on the school committee, just tell your dad that you get the week off now.
And you can stay up late.
Can I watch the senior hall?
No. Nice timely reference.
So what do we propose as a deadline date?
So we have...
The 9th or the 23rd.
9th or the 23rd. I can't make the 23rd because it's Candidates Night.
Yeah, I can't either. I have units in negotiations, so...
Okay. 9th, how does the 9th work for everyone?
Sure.
Okay?
It's good for me right now.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Perfect.
Sure.
Sure. Okay, all right, that's, that's it. All right, so now we'll move into the school budget presentation, which, who's doing the presentation?
Kelly's starting?
Kelly's starting the presentation.
Okay. First of all, let me thank everyone for attending. Who came here for the budget, you know, giving up an evening to listen to numbers and budget is certainly something to be a cause for celebration for. I want to start by just reiterating what our school district mission is. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through partner, school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. And I read that because our whole budget proposal centers around us meeting that district miss, mission, okay? So just some general highlights for the budget overview. What we are presenting here is, for 2014, is what we consider a fiscally conservative budget. It's basically a level services budget with some very timely and necessary add-backs put in there based on a lot of the research that we've done in the last few months. The funding request enables the district to maintain level services and begin to make very modest efforts towards restoring funding in critical areas of need. And as I mentioned earlier, the budget decisions were guided by our district mission. Okay, so the, just, just real quickly on the process of the budget, as we've, I think we started this back in September, as a budget subcommittee, with myself, Mr. Flaherty, and Sean Dooley.
The guy to my right, the guy to my left.
I have to think here, yes.
A few people.
We also went, basically, looked at our 2013 budget as a foundation, met to review some budget assumptions with staffing, salary requirements, grants, anything incoming in terms of revenue, and any perceived shortfalls that we may encounter for 2014. The district leadership team met to review the current budget and identify a priority as critical areas versus nice-to-have areas versus extremely critical areas that need funding. The committee reviewed the list of critical needs and discussed any reduction opportunities that we felt would be necessary to offset the costs that we were going for with this budget. I think that through Ingrid and the department heads, they met with the superintendent and the business manager to review the expense requests and to reduce wherever possible. And that's certainly always a good exercise when you go from the bottom up to develop a budget, that certainly makes it a sound proposal. We reviewed the preliminary budget proposal and made needed adjustments, and today, we're here to present that to the public. So with that, I will leave it to Ingrid to go over...
Walk through the budget request?
Walk through the budget request.
All right, excellent. I think it's important to start by giving the community an overview of the budget history over the past several years. Basically, in order to provide a level service budget, which means to open the doors with the existing staff that we have in place and to maintain the programs, it generally costs school districts about 5% to be able to, again, open with the current staffing, current programs, and level of service. The budget history in Norfolk, you can see, any year that you're under that 5%, really just to carry forward contracts usually cost you about 3%. So when you see numbers under that, it typically means that either positions were eliminated, programs were cut, or there were some other areas of significant reduction. So since 2008, the district has not received the funding that would have allowed them to open with the same level of staffing. So as you know, there has been a history of budget cuts in Norfolk. Yeah.
Federal fund?
What was that?
Federal fund should be next.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on here.
There we go.
I'm sorry, something's up with this, but anyway. In addition to the budget reductions that the district has faced, we've also seen reductions in the federal funds, so that would be our allocation grants, kindergarten grants, special education, transportation, at both the federal and the state level. So from 2009, you can see we're receiving $631,550 in federal funds and almost $90,000 in state funds. That's gone steadily down incrementally each year to 2013, where we were receiving $279,000 in federal funds and only $45,000 in state funds, state aid. I'm sorry, this is skipping, I don't know why. Hold on, I apologize, let me get back in here. I'm just going to have to go by side. Uh-oh. Need technology help.
Tech support to the media center, please. Tech support to media center.
We have the tech...
Hold on one second.
We have the technology committee chair here.
Happy to help, anytime.
Except now.
I can't move, I can't move right now.
Somebody super glitched into the chair?
I'm just going to reopen it.
I have a technology glitch with my chair.
Yeah, I'm just going to, I just wanted to reboot it so it would not shuffle the order.
Here we go.
Okay, well, in addition to that, the state has passed a number of unfunded mandates that the districts had to absorb the cost of. Those would include the new legislation on new teacher evaluation, which has required 20 hours of training minimum for all staff and evaluators. When you look at the hourly rate for that, that's about a cost of $54,000 to provide the training that is required by law. We've also adopted the Mass Common Core learning standards, and there's required curriculum revisions to all the curricular content areas. In order to pay teachers to do that, curriculum development work over the course of the year, it's about 20 hours at a rate of $30 per hour, which is about $14,000. Materials costs for supplementing the new curriculum and training, to revise all of our core subject areas, it's about $317,600. There's also new legislation which requires retail training, which is training for teachers to provide service to students who's English is a second language. The required training will cost us to train our staff about $17,000. As many of you probably have heard, we also have a new quarry law in place that's going to require fingerprinting for all volunteers and staff. That's a $30 per fingerprint. To implement that, just to quarry our staff, is going to be another $2,700. So in addition, I think for the total picture, we've had reductions in funds at, just within the community, reductions in funds at the state and federal level, and increased costs.
Revenue history means?
So what the revenue history means, again, prior to the recession, public schools averaged about 5% to 7% budget increases annually. As I mentioned earlier, 5% typically covers the cost of contractual raises and allows for maintaining current services and programs, and any increases below that typically mean reductions in staff and program cuts. It is true that the enrollment in Norfolk has declined slightly over the past six years, about 150 students. The decline in enrollment did help offset some budget cuts in the first years, where you could reduce teaching positions and not significantly impact class size, but the impact of that ends after year one, okay, because we reduce those positions in the first year of required budget cuts, and again, you can't continue to roll that savings over year to year. Eliminating a few teaching positions doesn't even fully fund the cost of the contractual salary increases. Class sizes have increased. We do have a couple of grade levels within the district right now that are at the maximum allowable size under our current policy. Again, the impact of declining revenues. Many classroom positions have been eliminated over the past five years. We've eliminated instructional support staff. The foreign language program was cut. Health education classes have been cut. There's been a reduction in library staffing at both Freeman Kennedy and HOD. Elimination of a technology integration specialist position at the, primarily at the Freeman Kennedy. The district's reduced professional development funding to provide in-service training for teachers by $30,000. There were drastic cuts in funding for curriculum and materials. The budget line for new curriculum adoption has been zero for the past several years, zero in technology and software. In addition, the district had to add fees for transportation and for band.
One more.
Is for $9,968,339. It reflects a budget increase from last year's budget of 4.3%. This request would restore the district to slightly above the funding that we had in the year 2009. It does, again, not reflect the cost of the annual salary increases from that year. So we're not currently in a position where we're really able to begin rebuilding. The recommended budget for 2014, we do have some anticipated savings. We do anticipate two teacher retirements, which will be a savings for the district of about $53,000. We will be eliminating one classroom teacher position. That's due to enrollment fluctuation, so it won't be, have an impact on class size. That's about $55,000. We are recommending eliminating two speech and language assistant positions at the HOD. That has a savings of about $48,000. Our special education budget is down by $84,000. That's a savings of students, we have fewer students outplaced next year. We also have some savings in the transportation costs of special education. Fixed charges was a one-time charge the district had in this year's budget for health insurance, and that won't be carried over. So we anticipate about $246,000 in savings. Budget additions. The cost just of maintaining current staffing, bringing forward the current teachers with step and lane changes, and an anticipated 2% cost of living increase for all non-union staff is about $315,000 combined. Those are required by contract that we meet those needs. In addition, we're recommending a few adds to the budget. We're recommending adding $15,000 back to the money that was reduced for professional development so we can appropriately provide some of the training that I mentioned earlier that's mandated, as well as to make sure that we're supporting the implementation of new curriculum. We are also adding or recommending that we add two days to the professional contract for our instructional support staff. Those are the paraprofessionals that work in the classrooms and under the direction of our teachers, work with many of our more challenged students. Currently, they are not paid to attend to any professional development, and we think that's a real disadvantage for the district. We are recommending adding a full-time speech and language pathologist to the HOD. As I mentioned before, we're recommending reducing the two assistant positions. This gives the district much greater flexibility of having somebody that's licensed, able to do the testing, present at team meetings, and provide direct service to kids. We've had several students that have recently moved into the district at the HOD that have some significant special educational needs. So we need to add a special education assistant, instructional assistant position to HOD. It's about $19,000. The .2 math specialist, that is not actually an addition. We currently have a math specialist at HOD. .2% of her salary is funded by the Title I grant. We don't anticipate we're gonna be eligible for that grant next year. So that .2 actually may, transferring that to the operating budget only allows us to have the current level of staffing. It's not an add. We are recommending adding back the .6 technology specialist that was cut last year. We'd like to redefine that position a little bit, bring it back to the Freeman Kennedy. That person would be responsible for exploring new technology, bringing current resources into the district, developing curriculum, co-teaching with teachers, providing professional development, researching grants. So it would be a very robust position. Because of the new Freeman Kennedy move and the size, the increase in the size of the school, we're requesting a .5 custodian for Freeman Kennedy. And we're also recommending adding .2 to the school psychologist position. We have somebody .8 right now. But we do have a need to have additional staffing to provide testing, as well as counseling services to students and consultation to classroom teachers. So the total budget additions are about $535,000. On the expense side additions, these are really minimal. Again, the expense side of the budget has been level-funded for many, many years. And as you know, the cost of pretty much everything has gone up, so postage, paper, copier supplies, ink cartridges, things like that. On the district side, there's a $638 increase. H.O.L. a day, the expense side is up by about $24,000, but there are some significant things that need to be replaced, furniture replacement, art materials, classroom listening centers, rugs, a copier. So there's quite a few things that need to be replaced that have been tabled for a number of years. Again, Freeman Kennedy, that just really reflects what has been spent over the last couple of years on the general supply side because of the increase in costs in many of the items. Operations, and that's just water, electricity, everything like that, we're anticipating is up by about $2,700. $40,000 we're requesting to put back into the district budget for new curriculum adoption. Next year, the district will be going through a science and technology curriculum review. We do anticipate that we're gonna need some new materials. We have some new lab equipment here at the Freeman Kennedy, but we're gonna need some new textbook, new materials, and new resources at the HOD to implement a more rigorous science curriculum. Extraordinary maintenance, $40,000. That reflects the need at the HOD school to do some repair to the sprinkler system, some much-needed painting, and some other, you know, small items. So that's about $120,000. I think it's important, just in terms of the breakdown of the budget allocations, just to give you an overview, the majority of the school budget goes to salary. So if you look in this graphic, the professional salaries, clerical salaries, and other salaries together, as well as the purple, which is number four for contracted services, make up the vast majority of the budget. We only have 4% for our, on the expense side of the budget. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room there as far as cutting expenses. Also, I think it's important for people to know what's not included in the budget. As again Kelly mentioned, we did put forward a fiscally conservative proposal. The town had asked us to prepare a level service budget, which anticipated cost would be about 3%. Our current budget proposal is 4.3%. So there were things that we weren't able to include that we would like to see in future budgets. There is currently only one reading specialist at the Freeman Kennedy School. We would have liked to restore the second reading specialist position that had been here prior. That's a person that provides consultation, support to classroom teachers, but a lot of direct service and intervention to students that are struggling with their reading development. So we would like to see that position back. We would like to see a foreign language program back in the elementary schools. Parents in the community are very interested in that as well. In order to do that, we'd have to add back 1.5 teachers to run the foreign language program. We'd also like to see the capacity to restore the health classes. That would require 1.6 health teachers. Restoration of the library staff for both HOD and Freeman Kennedy to bring those two people back to full-time would be a .7 addition. Last year, clerical support was cut at both the school level and the district level. Those are positions we'd like to see restored. We also currently are sharing a technology director. We have a .5 tech director at the school side, and the other .5 is on the town side. So we would like to see that position restored to full-time for the schools. And the last is an enrichment coordinator, and that would be somebody that can help consult with classroom teachers, provide extension and enrichment activities for students that are prepared to take on additional challenges. Things that are not included in the expense side, we're only asking for $15,030 that was cut to go back into the professional development line. We were not able to include in this budget a technology replacement plan for the HOD, and we do know that many of the computers there and equipment is going to need to be replaced. We would also love to be in a position at some point where we can eliminate fees for transportation as well as for music. The proposed budget does reflect what we feel are the fundamental needs of the district in order to maintain the educational quality that the people, residents of the town, are expecting. It is a conservative proposal. We do recognize that it's a difficult economic climate. We're trying to work collaboratively with other town departments. And we're also trying to develop partnerships and work closely with Plainville and Rentham to be able to share resources where we can. And we've been able to do that very successfully this year in a way that will help us offset costs. So as I talked earlier about all the mandated required training, we've shared. So we've brought somebody in, Rentham sent staff over. We're trying to share those resources. I apologize for things being out of order. I don't know why. And then questions? And they can be open? I don't know how you wanna...
Yeah, we'll do, we'll have them open. Anyone that has a question, please go to one of the mics or the mic and state your name and where you live and/or how you're affiliated with the school.
My name is Nicole Lucey, Eight Monocentric Avenue. I have three children and a tuition fee currently, one in first grade, two in preschool. My question tonight specifically pertains to kindergarten tuition. We, of the 35 districts that are grant-funded in the state of Massachusetts that charter for full-day kindergarten, the average cost is $2,893. We're currently at $36,000. We are tied for the fourth highest of those 35 districts. The other question that I have, and I hope it will be shared for next year's kindergarten, it was not shared last year. We are grant-funded, anything above $3,100 as a tuition fee should be a sliding fee schedule. I was told that we provided for a financial hardship, but when you look myself at a family of five, I did not consider myself to be anywhere near a financial hardship. However, I would not have paid the 100% of the tuition last year. And we do have a right, or excuse me, a responsibility to share that with parents. I hope that will happen at kindergarten tonight.
I got a question about the band fees. Where it says $16,000, is that the toll of what it costs for all of us?
Yeah.
Has anyone considered, like Ernie Bach is really big with Music Drives Us, and they love to do charitable stuff? You know, I actually used to work for Ernie Bach. My cousin has actually worked with him on the music side. You know, maybe we can see if Music Drives Us or Ernie Bach himself can kind of chip in and cover that fee for maybe a year or a couple of years. That way, it gives the kids that want to be in band and their families a break. I can't say it's gonna happen, but Ernie Bach is a very charitable guy. I know that from working for him.
Listen, I mean, I think that's one of those things, if you, you know, we've talked about, I mean, the actual cost of the band program is about $75,000, so $16,000 is the parent's offset. That's how much, you know, it's $100 for fourth grade, $200 for fifth and sixth grade. You know, we've talked to a lot of band parents before about looking into, you know, the band parents coming up with fundraising ideas and things along those lines. We're perfectly happy to do that. I mean, if you want to look into that on your own, that's fine, but as a school committee, we're not, you know, it's not our mission to do fundraising for, you know, you know, on our own. But if you want to, if you want to talk to them, if you can get, anyone wants to give our school money? I don't think we've ever turned anything down. So anyway, anywhere, anyhow, I mean, I'm fine with that. So if you want to do that.
Give them a call and tell them to come on down.
Can I respond?
Right, exactly. Let's get a response back to...
Okay. I just wanted to thank you for raising that. We did have a chance to talk a little bit about it at our parent leaders meeting the other night, and we have definitely made a real effort to make sure that that sliding fee scale is very well advertised. I know it's been distributed in the past, but we did, as part of the online kindergarten registration, we attached the sliding scale. So when parents go through it, they have to click that they've seen it and that it's available. I'm sure that that information will be given out at the kindergarten information night. And we also talked about having copies of it available at kindergarten screening. So we will make sure that that is well advertised. Thank you for raising that.
Just for everyone at home, maybe you want to explain exactly what that means, what this sliding scale is.
Yeah, sliding fee scale basically defines, you know, the, based on the number of students in the family and the family's median income, what percentage of the full kindergarten tuition they would be required to pay. And it is, anybody that has kids going into the kindergarten can go online to the kindergarten registration and click the link, and it'll bring it right up there.
Yeah, as I said, that unfortunately wasn't part of the internet aspect of it last year. And, you know, that was one of those things, you know. Well, exactly, it's, you know, it's, I had a kindergartner last year. I didn't know about it either. So, but I do have a kindergartner next year, so we'll see.
I don't even remember it from this year. It was on, it was on...
No, no, this is, this is new this year.
Now, the sliding fee scale was available. It's new that it's added to the online registration, that the link is there.
I don't even recall, I mean, obviously, I don't doubt it. I see one of us glossed over it, but I don't recall seeing that even.
No, no, you wouldn't, no, no, no. For Shannon, she's...
She's a kindergartner now.
Yeah, no, but this just started this registration cycle.
Okay.
Yeah, they just put it on for, like, if you're registering for next year. We've added it to the registration form.
And you saw that? Because I didn't recall seeing it when I registered my daughter.
For this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a link right in the kindergarten form when you're doing the registration. Says there's a sliding fee scale. If you think you may be eligible, click. You can read the link, and then we're sending individual information to anybody that clicks on that.
Okay.
I want to take a look at it, possibly re-engineer it in such a way it's more clear.
It's pretty, I mean, it's, if you're reading, if you're not just kind of clicking through...
You're not Kelly.
No, the reason I say this is because it's been brought up a couple of times, so if there's a concern there, I think it's something we might want to just...
Did you, did you see it this year?
We can definitely look at it, and we will.
Did you see it this year? Are your kids going into kindergarten?
I'm going to kindergarten next year.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, but coming into kindergarten next year?
It is. To be honest, I don't know if it was there or not this year.
Right, no, I know it is there this year, but I mean, did you notice it?
I did not notice it.
Yeah, so we, like, so Jeff's point, we might need to make that a little more, a little more bold.
I mean, because if you've got three or four people mentioning it, it might be something that someone might look at and say, you know, I can see it, but I was...
Yeah, it was, I saw it, but I was looking for it, because I knew we implemented it.
If you don't look for it, it's different, yeah.
You know, I mean, I knew about it, so it popped up to me, so...
But we'll definitely also make sure that we give the information out at kindergarten information night, and also every parent has to bring the child in for a screening. So we'll make sure it's available there, too. So we're making it accessible in a lot of different ways.
Okay.
My name is Rachel Cochran. I live at By Sandish Road, and I have a fourth grader, and I have twin boys going into kindergarten. So I just have two questions about the slideshow, and then one about the kindergarten discussion. I guess the question about the kindergarten discussion is if there is a policy for parents who have multiples going into kindergarten. It is extremely expensive, putting two children into kindergarten at the same time. I did not register them. My husband registered them for kindergarten, so he may have seen that sliding scale. I don't know, and we'll go back and look at it. But even with that, I'm curious if there's any, you know, discussion available around other parents, because there are many sets of multiples in the town. And, you know, what could be, how to help those parents maybe a little bit with that fee. My two questions about the presentation is, one of your slides, it says that the class sizes have increased and that a few grade levels are close to or close to the maximum allowable. I'm just curious, what is the maximum allowable?
It's for, HOD, it's 22. For Freeman Kennedy, it's 25.
And in the slide about not included in the budget request, when you ask for clerical support, I'm curious what that is, and if that could be something that you could get some parents to volunteer down with? Because I know that, I did get an email from one of the teachers, I can't remember which one, asking for some help with photocopier, which I did offer, and our emails got sort of crossed, and mine went to spam, and we never connected. But there are a number of parents out there who aren't working and are working, who may be willing to help the schools with clerical support if that's something needed. So I was just curious, you know, what kind of...
Linda, do you know who that might be? Do you know who that might be that she got the email from?
The clerical support on this is, was the central office staff. You know, so the secretaries, when you come in, you know, those were the positions that were cut. But that being said, you know, I think it's a great idea from the standpoint of even if we can get central office help and central staff help, and, you know, if we can get a parent, you know, obviously, you know, it can't be a different person every other day because it needs to be more of a trained person, but if we can get a parent that's willing to commit to one day a week throughout the year, and, you know, we know that person's coming in every Friday, I think, you know, Lisa and, you know, whoever needs, you know, needs something, you know, in their, you know, central office staff, you know, we can work with Mrs. Balfour and Mrs. Alfa Mickey. So I think that's a great idea.
We also did...
I have all my children going to school next year. And there are other parents as well, so...
And Paul's working from home.
We'd love your help.
That's not to say that they want to do it, but depending on what that work is, it's very possible that you could get some parents who have the time to do it.
Since Paul's office is out of the house now, you probably want to get out of there, right?
We've actually also worked, I think that's a great idea. We have worked also this year to revitalize the senior tax program. So we have senior citizens at both schools helping out with clerical support and different kinds of projects, too. So I think tapping those resources is a great suggestion. Thank you.
And also, just to address the, you know, the fee for multiples, I think that's what we tried to do with the sliding scale, is, you know, that does address that for a certain amount. I mean, and I know it's not perfect, but it's, you know, it's getting there, and so it's, so that's...
It's incorporated into that.
Right, because it's based on the number of children you have in the school, and, you know, and, you know, it's a full, it's a full formula, so. So, you know, it helps a little bit. You know, we were able to, you know, full-day kindergarten, it's, you know, we lose money on it as it is. So I mean, it's one of these, it's a catch-22 from a standpoint, from a taxpayer standpoint, that, well, you know, half-day kindergarten's free, so, you know, if you, you know, you get the other argument on the other side of, you know, people who don't have kids in school, they're like, why am I paying to, you know, you know, pay extra tax dollars for something that they don't even need? You know, is how a lot of, you know, you know, people, people view it. So it's, you know, so by doing the sliding scale, we tried to implement that a little bit more. And like, we did do the cap for the bus fee, and we did do the cap for the band. So we're, you know, those are maximum of two children on those things. So, so we try to do it wherever we can, but, you know, the big-ticket items are obviously a lot harder to cap it on, so. At least you don't have triplets.
As far as the fees themselves, going to the initial point of comparing the various districts, obviously, I'm not privy to whatever date she's looking at, but do we just, this year in part of the budget process, do we look to see what the fees are of the other districts and see where we are in terms of...
We looked at other districts, you know, in this immediate vicinity to look.
Right. Right. And so, and, you know, like, you know, like Medfield, who doesn't receive any grant of money, is like $4,000, you know. So, I mean, it's, you know... But what we also did was we...
Foxborough's $3,500.
Foxborough's $3,500. Rentham, I think, skirted going up to $3,200 this year, $3,250. Or $3,300 is what they're putting in their budget this year. So we were pretty close on the same for, you know, those are the last years. And we kept ours the same.
Yeah, no, we didn't move it this year.
Whereas a lot of the other towns that we've talked to, they're going up, so... And we also did an analysis. When we did the initial analysis, we did all the private, you know, Norfolk Community, you know, Community School, and, you know, the Montessori's in the area and things like that. And so we tried to compare all of those as well. So we tried to take everything available. You know, and it's still a money loser, so, I mean, you know. Anything on this side of the room? Come on, Kathy. You always have something. No, I really don't. I was just joking. I'm fine. I'm fine with it.
I just heard a thing.
Okay, could you...
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Could you... Yeah, could you... That way, the microphones won't pick it up otherwise, and so people at home will just...
Kathy, I'm the Norfolk resident and teacher at Freeman Kennedy School. And I just want to thank the school committee and the budgets committee, and the board for working hard on the budget, and so that we're not cutting teaching positions this year, we're not looking at cutting more programs, and anyway, I hope that the town supports it, I hope that the finance committee, and so I can support the budget.
Thank you, Kathy.
We will be presenting to the advisory committee next Wednesday, so if the populace really likes this and they want us to get these monies, you know, because we are asking for a 4% increase, and as you see, you know, we've, you know, past years, we've been getting 1%, you know, 1%, 1%, 0%, negative 3%, negative 1%. This is going to be, you know, this is a big increase in comparison. You know, that being said, you know, comparatively, KP is asking for triple that. So, you know, and unfortunately, as we all know, if Plainville and Rentham vote to give KP their triple budget, then we're all in trouble, because we're forced as a town to give KP their budget if the other two towns vote for it, which means, you know, the Norfolk schools will get cut along with other services in town. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that one, so...
I'm sorry, that's next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday night.
Isn't it looking good?
Yep, yep. 7:30, no, at the town hall, room 124, the Slackman's Room. 7:30. I think we're scheduled for 7:30. I have something, the town clerk, and then I think we're on right up immediately after, but mine's like going to be five minutes, so... And we'll do the same presentation, or Dr. Alardi will be doing the same presentation.
Do we have a prepared doomsday budget, if you will, to really point out how bad it would be if they passed that triple increase that King Philip is asking for? Like, the effect it would have on this school, these schools, excuse me?
No, we haven't been, we haven't been asked to do that. The town had asked us to go with a level service, so we will be prepared with 3%. Certainly, if we don't get the... Our request is for 4.3. If we have to go with the 0%, then all those budget additions, restoration positions that we have on the table would be, we'd have to relook at.
Yeah, because if that ends up being the case, I mean, I really would like that to be out there, people realize the horrible effect that would have and the ramifications of that, so...
Oh, yeah. If we get 0, I mean, if you look at just the contractual, if we get 0, we're having to do $300,000 of cuts day one, just to make our contractual obligations met, without giving anyone else a raise or anything like that. So we're in the hole $300,000 right off the bat. So we're going to have to make $300,000 of cuts if we get a 0 again, plain and simple.
But we're optimistic that...
No, I hope that's to be the case, but I'm just saying to more positions to sell the fact that this is a very reasonable request, given what we need.
Yep.
The alternative is $300,000 a whole, and it actually could be a worse alternative for what you described. If they're asking for 12% to 13%, that ends up being a net reduction, not just a 0.
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah, and it still only averages us out, I think, below 1... Even with a 4% this year, it averages out us out below 1% on average over the past five years. So it's not, it's not like we're being...
Yeah, I mean, one year we cut three alone, and another year we cut at least one, that I recall, right?
Right, right.
And then there was a 0.
And then we had a 0. And then we had a, then we had a 1 and 1/2.
Well, when was the last time we had a 4% increase? What year are we going back to?
At least probably about eight years.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
And it was a much smaller, you know, number to deal with.
Yeah, it's probably seven and a half million at that point.
Right, exactly. I mean, so...
But I think in the past, the town has given at the early stages of the budget the parameters of a 0 increase, rather than what they asked us to prepare this year.
No, I understand that. I just want to make sure we're prepared for that, and just so people have an understanding of what the ramifications would be.
Yep.
Obviously, we have to be an advocate for our own position.
And obviously, if the KP budget does get passed by the other two towns, I mean, well, I'd say it could get passed by Norfolk, but I doubt it. But, you know, let's say it does happen, you know, then what we're going to probably have to be doing is pushing for an override. And in this climate with this thing, it's going to be a very, very difficult battle, especially after everyone's taxes just went up because of the new school, of pushing for